Lori Beth Suesman from the congregation Beth Israel. Would you please come on up?
I would make you say, "May I be to welcome you." Our God, our Lord and Savior. From our country, the will and the worth of the citizens' strong and the justice, liberty, and equality. May each of us fulfill our responsibility and citizenship with care, generosity, and gratitude, ever conscious of the extraordinary blessing of freedom, ever mindful of our duties to one another. Bless those who volunteered to labor on behalf of all of us. May they find the strength and courage to complete their tasks and fulfill their dreams. May our elected leaders, our mayor, our city council men and women, and all who hold public office, exercise the responsibilities with wisdom, fairness, and justice for all. Fill them with love and kindness, and bless them that they may walk with integrity on the paths of peace and righteousness. We also ask Creator and protector of all, watch over our armed forces and all those entrusted with our safety, as they daily put their lives at risk to protect us and our freedoms. Be with them in times of danger. Give them courage to act with honor and dignity, as well as insight to do what is right in your eyes. Fill us all with the gifts of love and courage, that we may create a world that reflects your glory. May we each respond to the charge of your prophet Micah. For what does God demand of you but to act justly, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with your God? May the one who brings peace on high bring peace and prosperity to our world, and keep us in safety, and let us say, "Amen."
Thank you. Ms. Newman, would you lead us in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Lord and to the United States of America, and to a republic whose name is one nation under God, in which there is no division.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lori Beth. Thank you, Ms. Newman. Need a motion to accept the agenda. Remove by Ms. Lawrence. Second. Second by Mr. Glavine.
Council President, the administration would like to remove items five I, five J, and five N to take off the table.
I, J.
These are all items that you'll see again, but it's a timing issue on each of those.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second. Motion by Mr. Glavine. Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions?
I would also, I would also move to table items C, D, E, and F.
Okay, we have an addition to that motion.
Order or move it?
Okay. Mr. Glavine, you want to go ahead and do all of them? Move all of them?
We can move all of them and then ask for any exceptions.
Okay. And second by Mr. Deming. That's, for the record, it'll be I, J, and M removed. C, M. C, D, E.
N as in Nancy, right?
M as in Mary.
N as in Mary.
Oh, is it Ian? Oh, Ian. Nancy, got you. Okay, so, we're removing I, J, and N as in Nancy. We're tabling C, D, E, and F on the policy agenda. Got it? Okay. Was moved by Mr. Glavine. Second by Mr. Deming. Any other questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, unanimous, seven, zero. Motion carries. Mayor's report?
Exceptions.
Oh, any exceptions? Okay, I'm sorry. You got an exception?
Yeah. I'm going to vote against taking C, D, E, and F.
Okay. Ms. Lucy, note that Mr. Glavine-
I'm tabling it. I'm voting against.
Voted against tabling C, D, E, and F. Anyone else? No, no, they're just, he just voted against it. They all will be removed.
I just voted against tabling.
To the next meeting, yes. Okay. All right. So I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
As amended, and then we'll have some discussion.
Yes, we will have a discussion. So, I need a, I need a motion to, so move. Move by Mr. Deming. Second by Ms. Newman. Any question, discussion, Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, on items four, C, D, E, and F, these deal with the conditional use on short-term rentals. And I know that we're, I don't see Mr. Creel here present tonight from Community Development, but I know there's a public hearing scheduled, as I recall, for March 21st.
Yes.
And I think that's the reason for tabling this, so that we can hear the discussion at the public hearing on March 21st at the Planning Commission. So we're not just tabling it for a week. I guess it would be tabled, subject to call.
To call, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say I voted against, you know, the short-term rental provisions the last time it came up, and that's why I'm voting against it tonight.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Okay, seven, zero. Any exceptions? No exceptions. Motion carry. Now Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this time I'd like to ask Tracy Fowler from the Blinded Veterans Association to come up here and, and great pleasure to read this proclamation and, and, let's see.
Are you telling me?
Right here, you're good.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas the 28th day of March is designated as National Blinded Veterans Day for efforts in improving rehabilitation services, education, and benefits for blinded veterans. And whereas the Blinded Veterans Association demonstrates to all veterans with visual impairments how to take their rightful, take their rightful place in the community, creating a world built upon equality. And whereas the Blinded Veterans Association continues to advocate for veterans with combat-related and natural vision impairments in Mississippi and throughout the United States to regain independence, confidence, self-esteem through rehabilitation, training, and assisting their fellow veterans with visual impairments. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, hereby proclaim the 28th day of March 2019 as Blinded Veterans Day. So congratulations. Thank you. Top of the morning to have you, to everyone. You know, this whole year I've been Irish, and I guess after this week, you know, a little bit of me will always be Irish. So I see everyone from the Hibernian Society, and it's, but it's been a great year, and it's been a great pleasure to, to be with you as your 2018 Grand Marshal of the St. Patrick's Day. So I would, Mary, and your crew, and everyone from the Hibernian Society, as well as good friends of mine, that John Michael O'Keefe and Catherine Winter are going to be our 2019 Grand Marshal and Colleen. So let me, again, off, I'm sorry? Yeah, that's it. 2019, did I say that? Okay.
He did good. He's just picking on.
Well, he does that. He's been like that since we were in the third grade. So great to have everyone, and it's been tremendous for me to, to be honored, and again, it'll always be with me. So, whereas for four centuries, Americans of Irish heritage have contributed their lives and fortunes to their adopted country. And whereas the Irish were the largest European group to inhabit the 13 colonies in the 75 years leading up to the 1776 Revolution, and played a significant role in the War for Independence. And whereas Irish-Americans have excelled in every facet of life, including education, science, medicine, the arts, and politics. Whereas the Hibernian Marching Society of Mississippi was formed to foster, promote, and perpetuate Irish traditions, heritage, and fellowship of Irish and Irish-American descendants along the Mississippi Gulf Coast, and is a viable ethnic organization that contributes energy and funds to enhance the quality of life. Now, therefore, I Andrew Fofo O'Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, hereby proclaim March 2019 as Irish Heritage Month. Mary, I'll hand it over to you.
Well, we're gonna miss him, but not very far. He's staying with us. He's staying. But this year, we have some amazing people as well. We've got John Michael O'Keefe, and we have our beautiful Colleen, Mrs. Christine Winter. And I'd like to take a minute to introduce you very briefly to them. Put my eyebrows on. Would you please? Teamwork. John Michael O'Keefe Jr., he was the son of John Michael O'Keefe and Deborah Dawn Langlinay. He was born in Biloxi and has been a lifelong resident here. He is married to Missy Hensley, and they are the parents of three beautiful children, Connor, London, and Parker. He obtained his Bachelor of Business Administration degree from the University of South Alabama. He worked for several years in the family business before furthering his education by earning a Master of Business Administration from the University of Southern Mississippi. O'Keefe pursued a sales career in healthcare and ultimately leading to a career in healthcare administration. He obtained his Nursing Home Administration Administrator's License, and operated a nursing and rehabilitation facility, and later became the CEO of Select Specialty Hospital Gulf Coast in Gulfport. Miss Christina Winter, she is the daughter of Carl and Gay Winter. She was born and raised here in Biloxi. She graduated from the University of Mississippi with the highest of honors. She is a lifetime alumni of Alpha Omicon Pi Sorority. She is currently a receptionist in a medical office in Oxford with plans to attend graduate school at Ole Miss. She interned for the College Disney Program in Orlando, and was a Gulf Coast debutante in 2014. She was presented as a debutante for the State of Mississippi in 2016, and she is a member of the Daughter of the American Revolution Biloxi Chapter, and is affiliated with the Cameo Society of Mississippi. This is just a brief introduction of our two amazing ambassadors to the Hibernian Marching Society, and we welcome them, and we just cannot wait to get our season on. Thank y'all so much.
You're here. You're here. Vincent, you want to take another photo of everybody together?
Turn around. Come on. Let them take a picture.
There you go.
All right, very good.
Mary, I think we're gonna take a five-minute Irish break, right? Okay, and we have some refreshments. So, Mr. President, if we, break for five minutes?
About a five-minute break?
Yes. Thank you.
Where were you at mine?
Were you? Did you? You haven't had one, but you did.
I'm only a minute. Did you not know that?
No. No, I did not know that. Tommy's down.
I need your help.
Give me a call, see Scott. I knew Scott was running, and Tanya's husband. But you would do a great job.
Thank you.
And you would do a great job. I am so proud of you. I didn't even know you could do that. When did you, when did you start?
Very last day.
Well, you know, you'll do good. I'll tell you what. I've been up there. The Senate is missing. It's missing a lot of beauty. He's gonna bring up the Africa.
Oh, yeah. We both gonna go up. We going up.
You both? Cause you're running, you're running for, what's, what's?
115.
115.
115, yeah. He was supposed to.
He was supposed to step back.
He sat on my couch and told me that. But I'm, I'm going. I'm gonna start putting up, I got signs, I'm gonna start putting up tonight.
Same with Delano.
And I like it.
Showed up at the coffee shop, said he wasn't gonna be running for politics, he was over it, and then he even announced it, done the politics, wants to focus on his career and family.
No, you lying. I have to.
Love you too. Oh, there's a lie.
It's hard, you know, it's free market.
Exactly. Because we can talk. And see, that's the thing, they get up there, they give me the law, they play all that. It's about the coach. And that's what we've been fussing about. We needed that BP money.
Look, I forgot to make the call. Look, I'm 4:30.
I saw that, congratulations.
I remember it.
Absolutely.
That's the reason why I'm running, because like I said, when I went to the stadium on Coast Street, and it was devastated, and I saw people there, and I saw people there.
Amen.
That's why I'm in.
I was there.
Yeah, I know, we talked. We talked. Yeah.
See, I was with you.
What's that?
I was there.
Three months.
I will.
You like coffee?
I do.
Do you?
I'm like, I will.
And I got liquor.
Oh, that's your umbrella. I'm in a council meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna call you right after, if it's not too late.
God do it as soon as they, we open back up.
I didn't have to be here.
Yeah. Hey, let them sit here. They'll be all right. Give them something for them.
Three minutes left. Three minutes left.
What time did we close? I know, you gotta go, I gotta go to say hi to Jerry.
All right. You're really important. You go to bed, make it.
Yes.
You gotta remind me.
Okay, that's right.
My head is going to break, and my business is, I can't be.
Yeah, you definitely have to be there. I've been invited to, yeah. And like the Chamber of Commerce, because DI reveals having their chamber, what do you call it? They're reaching out to try to get Chamber members for the DI reveal chamber, so I'm going over there, because that's the area for me, and of course you too. So we're all in that same area. So they're doing that, I think Thursday morning, morning coffee, so I'll be there.
I can do that.
Yeah. Right. Definitely in the evening. Like that one yesterday was huge, for this evening, yeah. And actually, I really didn't plan on going. Who called me? It was Shante calling, believe it or not.
She called me?
She called me. Well, you know, she had pretty much, and so, she called me, I said, well, they got something in the heart, like, what if I said, I called, and I put my name in that morning, and I'm gonna tell you, just so she can get next to Dr. Tisdale.
Okay, okay.
And if I don't know, I would, I would just say, and then say too, but I didn't plan on going. She was the one that had to push me to go.
I am.
Yeah. Okay.
You gotta push me.
I will, I will, I will. I will. Yeah. You, you gonna do well, you gonna do well, no matter what, anyway. Oh, yeah, yeah, there you are. You're gonna be, based on what I'm hearing, you're gonna be a runner. And, and that was the whole purpose of this, you get a runner. And whoever don't make it, they're gonna endorse you. They don't have a choice. They don't have a choice. If it's, if it's, Delano, he's, if Delano don't say nothing, you're still gonna take this one. If, if the Glock won, come on.
Today, 2:00, we start to roll. Thank you. 2:00. So I didn't put in the yacht club, for Astors. You'll do that for us? Thank you.
Mr. President, let me, before we get rolling, before we get rolling, I'd like to mention every-
All right.
We forgot to mention the one thing that Saturday, that's gonna happen Saturday. The St. Patrick's Day Parade is gonna start at 2:00 from the Yacht Club and go past your testers, past City Hall. And you know, we've got the Shamrock outside, and so we look for everyone to be here, and we'll have a great time. So thank y'all to Hibernia.
All right, we about ready to crank back up. I want to please note to the room that if anyone's here on the short-term rentals, which is C, D, E, and F, they have been tabled to, to March 21st, when we have a public here. Just wanted to make that note. Okay, Mayor, you have any other, anything else? Christie Hicks for the Census Bureau? Christie Hicks here? Not here? And the-
Ms. Councilman Lawrence, you gonna bring us a cookie back up?
Where's our cookie?
And Mayor, you gonna spread the minutes? Spread the- All right, thank you. I don't see any departmental reports, council reports. I'm gonna start with Mr. Barrett. Done? Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I got a few things. Number one, MGM Park, I'm gonna suggest to the administration that we consider maybe Gulf Regional Planning to commission an impact study on what it has contributed, not only in direct sales, but indirect sales, hotel occupancies and revenues, and so forth and so on. If y'all would kind of let the council know how much that would cost, if anything, from Gulf Regional Planning, or some other entity that can do the impact study. Also, the Masonic Lodge, I think we removed the light pole, and I've just got a couple of calls today, are we gonna be replacing the light pole that was removed? I'm not familiar with it, where the light pole was, they're just saying it's a lot darker than what it was before we were doing all the Howard Avenue work. And here's just a few more. Mr. Mark Johnson that lives on North Haven, I know we completed the dredging work, I don't know if Christie's here tonight. But if I could get kind of a report, or is it completely ended? I'm assuming it is, but I just needed to get a report to report back to Mr. Johnson. Ms. Brenda Schometta and Mr. Bob Benedict, they, their property backs up to Malpus Landing, and I think there is a drainage plan for that property. I just, I need an update to tell them. I don't know if they've been updated, but I'm getting some emails from them, and I told them I would ask the administration tonight for an update. I'm almost finished. Ms. Pat Cook, she lives on 695 Watersview, and there were some sidewalks that were replaced after the infrastructure work. New sidewalks put in, but they're failing. And she, she indicated she put in a request in February, and she hasn't heard anything back. So if I can get a report on if there's, if that's under our jurisdiction. 695 Watersview, Ms. Pat Cook. And finally, I'd like for the, my colleagues to consider, when we close the meeting tonight, if we can do it in memory of Mr. Didi Zatunovich, who has a lot of accolades in the City of Biloxi, one being former police chief and state trooper, and I can go on and on, but I'd like my colleagues to consider that when we close. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, sir. Do we, does the city have any events scheduled at MGM Park for the next quarter? You know, I asked, I'm about due, I ask that every quarter.
We do, Councilman. As a matter of fact, the Beau Rivage, a city-sponsored event with, with the Beau Rivage 20th Anniversary is this Saturday. The following Saturday, the 23rd, is the Battle of the Forces, which is a round robin golf, or golf, softball tournament between all the military services. And on the 30th of the month, so that's three weeks, three Saturdays in a row, is the Chamber Commerce Beer Fest.
Would that constitute a trend, then? If we're doing-
Well, two, two, usually a trend would be at least three point, data points.
We're getting there. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it.
Mr. Deming?
Just one thing, I don't see the Engineering Department or Public Works here, but if you could have someone go out to Barrett Road, we did a gravity flow station, a new pump station out there, some repairs of that area. There was some damage done to the roads there, some of the existing infrastructure there. Just see if we could get someone out there to repair it.
Parrot Road?
Barrett Road.
Barrett. Not, not, not like Jimmy Buffett?
No, no. Barrett.
Barrett.
Yeah, Barrett Road.
Like Nathan Barrett.
Barrett, okay. Got it?
Nathan Barrett Road.
That's it?
So there's a Deming Road, and there's a Barrett Road?
I think they cross each other.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, you have to remember, Saturday's a big day. We have Grilling on the Green from 10 to 5. At 2:00, there's St. Patrick's Day Parade, and we have the 20th Anniversary Beau Rivage at 4:15, they're cutting the cake. And I think it's from 6 to 8, is they gonna have something at MGM Park, where I think Fofo's supposed to speak, so we already get, four or five people should come to that.
And there's a baseball tournament all day long at MGM Park?
We know what, they be in the way. But I mean, that's all Saturday. So there's a lot going on in the City of Biloxi, once again. That's why people come down the coast, they come to Biloxi, because we're all having a good time, and we enjoy people coming, visits from us, it just turns out great. So this is gonna be another great day Saturday.
Councilman Lawrence, are you gonna make a donation?
Sure. I can, $4.
And all those beads you caught, I mean, all the little kids couldn't catch anything, you were catching everything, and I mean, I figured you could make a donation back to somebody with all those bodyguard beads.
This is true. I did catch quite a bit. Paul Tisdale, so they said, all I did was watch you, he said, it was amazing. But I tell you what, every one of them kids that was up there with us was happy. They was happy.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. And of course, I have one thing, just to Mr. Rodent, Walt, between Bradford Street and Walker Street on Main Street, they got a lot of rollover curves. Could you double-check the prints on that? A lot of people are not satisfied with that, because there's no dips in any of those things. So if you please check that out for me. Thank you. Other than that, that concludes my report. We're gonna move on to the public agenda. Total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. Would anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? Would anyone on my right? Yes, sir? Come on up. Yes, sir. Please sign in, and for the record, would you please state your name and address?
Yeah, Dale Smith with a Y, like Dale Smythe, but Dale Smith, Dale Smith with a Y. And so I have three minutes, so I was gonna talk about, well, four things, because the veterans was already talked about, so never mind that. But one thing I noticed, I was at the little business incentive center over there to file my paperwork for my own business, which I hope to start, and I noticed there was a piece of legislation, or a regulation, or something allowing panhandling as a, like a profession, I guess now. Is that right? It's, there's a document-
And, um, finally, uh, I'd like, uh, for the, my colleagues to consider, when we close the meeting tonight, if we can do it in memory of, uh, Mr. Didi Satanovich, uh, who has a lot of accolades in the city of Biloxi, one being, uh, former police chief and state trooper, and I can go on and on, uh, but I'd like my colleagues to consider that when we close. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, so do we, does the city have any events scheduled at MGM Park for the next quarter? You know, I asked, I'm about due, I ask that every quarter.
We do, Councilman, as a matter of fact, the Beau Rivage, a city-sponsored event with, with the Beau Rivage, uh, twentieth anniversary is this Saturday. The following Saturday, the twenty-third, is the Battle of the Forces, which is a, a round robin golf, uh, or golf, softball tournament between all the military services. Uh, and, uh, and on the thirtieth of the month, so that's three week, three Saturdays in a row, is the, uh, Chamber Commerce Beer Fest.
Would that constitute a trend, then?
Well, yeah, two, 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 usually a trend would be at least three point, data points.
Okay, we're getting there, alright, thank you, appreciate it, that's it.
Mr. Demme?
Just one thing, I, I don't see the Engineering Department or Public Works here, but if you could have someone go out to, uh, Barrett Road, we did a, a gravity flow station, a new pump station out there, some repairs of that area. There was some damage done to the, um, the roads there, some of the, the, um, existing infra- infrastructure there, just see if we could someone out there to repair it.
Barrett Road?
Barrett Road.
Barrett, not, 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 not like Jimmy Buffett?
No, no, no.
Barrett.
Barrett.
Yeah, Barrett Road.
Like Nathan Barrett.
Uh, Barrett, okay.
Nathan Barrett Road.
Yeah, that's it.
So there's a Demming Road and there's a Barrett Road?
I think they cross each other.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, you have to remember, Saturday's a big day, we have grill on the green from ten to five. At two o'clock, there's St. Patrick's Day Parade. And we have the twentieth anniversary of Beau Rivage at four fifteen, they're cutting the cake. And I think it's from six to eight, is they gonna have something at MGM Park, where I think folks supposed to speak, so we already get four or five people should come to that.
And there's a baseball tournament all day long at MGM Park?
We know what, they be in the way. But I mean, that's all Saturday, so that's a lot, there's a lot going on in the city of Biloxi, once again. That's why people come down the coast, they come to Biloxi, 'cause we always having a good time, and we enjoy people coming, visits from us, it just turns out great, so this is gonna be another great day Saturday.
Councilman Lawrence, are you gonna make a donation?
Sure, I can afford dollars.
Yeah, and all those beads you caught, I mean, all the little kids couldn't catch anything, you were catching everything, and, I mean, I figured you could make a donation back to somebody with all those bodyguard beads.
I did catch quite a bit. Paul Tisdale said, he said, all I did was watch you, he said, it was amazing. But I tell you what, every one of them kids that was up there with us was happy. They was happy.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. And of course, I have one thing, um, just, uh, to Mr. Rode, Walt, um, between, uh, Bradford Street and Walker Street on Main Street, uh, they got a lot of rollover curves, uh, could you double check the prints on that? A lot of people are not satisfied with that, 'cause there's no dips in any of those things, so if you please check that out for me. Thank you. Other than that, that concludes my report. We're gonna move on to the public agenda, total of forty-five minutes, three minutes per person. Would anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? With anyone on my right? Yes, sir, come on up. Yes, sir, please sign in, and for the record, would you please state your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Dale Smith with a Y, like Dale Smythe, but Dale Smith, Dale Smith with a Y. And, uh, so I have three minutes, so I was gonna talk about, well, four things, 'cause the veterans was already talked about, so never mind that. But one thing I noticed, I was at the little, um, Business Incentive Center over there to file my paperwork for my own business, which I hope to start. And I noticed there was a, a piece of legislation, or a regulation or something, allowing panhandling as a, like a, a profession, I guess now, is that right? It's, there's a document you can fill out to have a permit to be a panhandler, is that right?
Sir, this is not question and answer, this is just...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, there, there is in fact a, uh, a panhandling application, that's true, right, okay. So I'm just wondering, um, you know, in like New York City, New Orleans, and you have buskers, artists, people who draw portraits, people who write poetry, like in, uh, Before Sunrise, if you ever saw that movie, and they charge money for that. Could this, could, would somebody come under that regulation? I'm, I'm asking a question again, sorry. I, I think, um, somebody might be able to come under that regulation or statute, um, as a busker or an artist. They're a kind of a panhandler, they're doing something on the street, that's kind of, you know, wild and crazy, but they're charging money for it, so could maybe the council consider looking at that, maybe, you know, going to New Orleans and seeing how it's done there, or maybe New York, and just revisit that, see if maybe we can have buskers and artists on the street. You know, maybe kind of a little bit of New Orleans, since we're basically in New Orleans here, so. Just a thought, so that's one thought, um, microloans, of course, we all know that there was a Nobel Prize-winning proposal to have microloans, which was very successful in Africa and Asia, like a hundred dollar loan to somebody, like a, a woman to start a business selling widgets. And, um, all she had to do was borrow a hundred dollars and then pay back a hundred dollars, which probably didn't take too long if she was successful. And, uh, so I'm starting a business, so this is on my mind, I have to get about a hundred dollars to start my business. And I, like I said, I can sell a poodle, or I can get a loan from a bank. But, um, you know, if you have bad credit, that might be a problem, but what if there was the city, you know, providing loans, you know, a microloan, a hundred dollars? Get Walmart to sponsor it, then they can advertise and say, hey, look what we're doing, you know? They'd give you free money, so, just a thought, microloans. Dusty Bonge, she's the daughter of the founding family, the Swetmans of, um, of the People's Bank. And she's probably the most famous, um, abstract artist woman of the twentieth century, like Jackson Pollock, and then maybe Dusty Bonge, but nobody...
Okay, sir, your time is up.
Everybody should speak Irish.
And just, just for informational purposes, community development could have some of your answers for you. Okay, anyone else to my right? Anyone else to my right? Anyone else in the room? Okay, well, we will close citizen comments, and move on to the policy agenda. Ordinance A, Lucy?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for a change in zoning from RM thirty high-density multifamily residential to RS seven point five medium-density single-family residential for three ninety-eight Rosalie Maria.
Okay, Ms. Newman, you have any comments? Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the panel? That being said, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Seven zero. Motion carries. Resolution B?
Resolution to rename an existing city roadway to San Bar Lane for a remnant section of Lorraine Road.
I'll move it.
Move by Mr. Barrett?
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale, any, any questions? No questions, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. I need a motion on consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Newman, second by Dr. Tisdale, George, I'm gonna go, you go first?
Yeah, I wanted, uh, check out, uh, Kay with the, the McElroy. Could you explain to me, Peter, what's going on, is he borrowing two hundred fifty thousand to head on a building?
Uh, yeah, he's, he's, um, the lawsuit is all been resolved, that was resolved in the city's favor, and he's wanting to do an addition to the existing building. Uh, and so he's borrowing money to do that. The, uh, rent's gonna increase because of that addition, but this is something his bank is requiring us to agree that, that, uh, to acknowledge he has a, he has a note on the property. We've got the same sort of thing done with Golden Nugget in their ba- their bank.
I know, we do it normally, adjust, uh, rent every five years, so this is gonna adjust it quicker, do you match?
No, I think we just adjusted, the first adjust was last year, and that's when he filed the lawsuit. Uh, so we've got another four years before we get another CPI. But there will be a, a smaller increase for this new addition.
Well, the city has anything involved in the money he's borrowing, or is just his responsibility? Not gonna fall back on the city?
It's all his responsibility.
And he has to borrow his money and spend it on the building itself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
No, that was it only, that was the money, the rest is removed.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme?
We are, uh, Peter, can you just tell me what this relocation payment is?
You, the location?
The relocation, was this an eminent domain issue?
Was it eminent, yeah, that's Keesler Gate. That's the Keesler Gate project, it's, it's outside.
No, this isn't eminent domain, this is where we paid just the relocation cost, and when we sent it to you the first time, it's an estimated cost until they actually move. So what this is, is adjusting those costs, so we can pay them the complete cost of it, for them.
Okay.
Revising that cost, I think it was twenty-nine hundred more dollars it cost them to move than we originally asked for, so.
Okay.
But no eminent domain.
What's that? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item L, that deals with, uh, renewing time clock plus system support agreement with data management, and that's used in the Public Works and Engineering Departments. Any thought given to expanding that to other departments, it's just people clocking in and out? Uh, I'd ask this question last year, this, I mean, what about Parks and Recreation, Community Development, people that are coming and going? I don't know how we document that, I worry about Department of Labor incidents, if you will, and overtime, questions that come up, and so forth, but I know they've been using this particular software, I wanna say maybe this is year three? Possibly year four. Uh, but anyway, I'm thinking you may wanna consider using it in other departments as well, and it'd be really terrific if it interfaced with whatever, uh, software we use to print the checks and all that other stuff. So it's not really a question or any, anything other than, I think it'd be a good idea to look at other departments, I don't know what the cost is, but maybe some thought would be given to that, I think it would help us in the long run for doing something like that. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Glavin?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Barrett?
Nothing.
Nothing, and I also have nothing. Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, exceptions will be second. All in favor of the consent agenda? Seven zero, exception, Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme? R is a Robert. Dr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
Ms. Barrett? And I also have none. Consent agenda passes. Code enforcement? Mr. Chamber?
Okay, the first one is, um, Deluxe Homes LLC, this is the property at twenty forty-four Greater Avenue. It's basically weeds and debris. It's weeds and debris. I can't show you the picture. Weeds and debris.
What kind of weed? So it's clear or what?
Oh, it's clear.
Clear, yeah.
Okay, it's done, okay.
That's a good one.
For some reason I didn't hear, I couldn't hear.
I heard that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. A B.
May I ask a question, is it cleared or still in violation?
It's clear.
Still in violation.
Oh, it's still in violation?
It's still in violation.
Oh, okay, okay, I, I couldn't hear, so that's Deluxe Homes still in violation, with no pictures. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of Deluxe Homes? Anyone here to speak on Deluxe Homes? We're considered a matter closed. Okay, B. Yep, well, well, no, that's, that's B.
Oh, okay.
B, this is for B.
B is Bobby Claude Lewis, this is the property at two sixty-two Lamute Street. Uh, this is trash, debris, and a house which is in much disrepair.
So it's still in violation?
Still in violation.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, who wants to... Will it be okay if I give you thirty days and we check on you? Okay, I'll move for thirty days.
I'll second it.
Okay, okay. Move it, second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Okay, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Okay. C?
C is Charles, Darren, and Melissa Mo- Mothray. This is, uh, one zero two five one Eagle Point Circle, and also the one, the next one, is also the same group, it's one oh two five seven, the lot right next door, Eagle Point Circle. Both of these are grass, trash, debris.
Um, I've, I've talked to Melissa Mothray, and as of yesterday afternoon, she texted me and said the grass had been mowed, if we give them thirty days, they'll have all the debris and trash out of there, so, on both of those, if we can get a thirty-day extension.
Move by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Seven zero. Motion carry. As for C and D? Alright, thank you, Ms. Chamber. I need a motion on routine agenda.
So moved.
Move by Dr. Tisdale? Second? I'll go ahead and second that. George?
Yeah, finance with people, uh, I know we were collecting a million and four last week, do we have anything else coming, are we having anything in the pipeline? So, but we up to date? As far, as far as receiving the money for all our contracts and that? Okay, so when is the next time we'll apply for something?
Soon as we pay some of these bills, soon as we get the cancer check, I think it's five hundred seventy-two thousand, what, what is that, five seventy-two? We'll apply that, that would be in the mill. What, I think, primary hospital, is that what that was? Well, five seventy-two, it's payout fifty-four? Yeah, and what happens is they try to stay nine, sixty days in front of us, and that's how, but the next step is pay up, bill, send it off.
So that's good, that we, that we stay on top of like that, that's good. Right. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions on the routine agenda? Nope? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Seven zero. Motion carry. Need a motion to recess?
So moved in memory of Didi Satanovich, let, let me second that, I think, okay, Mr. Glavin wants to make...
Mr. Glavin, could you move that?
That's correct, I'm moving, uh, that we, we say in memory of Didi Satanovich, and I, I'm sure it's unanimous, the, the motion.
Okay.
We'll all, we'll all second that.
And we all second it.